This conference will now be recorded.
I appreciate everybody being on this call tonight. I know that there's a lot of questions that people may have, so I'm going to start with a small presentation, should be able to get through it pretty quick, and then we'll get to some questions in the end. First and foremost, I hope that everybody is staying safe during these uncertain times, and also staying sane. It is a difficult time. Anyone who just joined, if you could mute your phone, it would help us a lot with so many people on the call. For those of you who I haven't met, I apologize that this is going to be our first interaction, but my name is Joel Dragan. I am the fairly new executive director here for Florida Youth Soccer. I will be running through a few slides. We'll get to a bit of an open forum after that. I just want to start this off with stating to everybody what should be very obvious is that the safety of our players is the utmost priority for us here at FYSA. And a lot of our decision-making that I'm going to talk about in these upcoming slides really is all rooted in what's best for the player and keeping them safe in a soccer environment. I know the Board of Directors would echo that along with the staff. So I will just dive right into it. So a few guidelines, purpose of this meeting tonight, ground rules, even if you will. This is a focus topic, guys. We are talking about FYSA, U.S. Youth Soccer, U.S. Soccer Federation, soccer in general's response to the coronavirus and the COVID outbreak. There will be other opportunities. I am a big membership-driven person for you to offer your opinions on a myriad of other things that we offer at FYSA, the budget, the AGM, et cetera. But tonight, I'd really like to remind everybody to stay focused on the task at hand here tonight, which is the COVID virus and coronavirus. Introductions, once we get to the town hall portion, since there's now 116 people on this call, I'd like everybody, when you do ask something, since we can't see many of you, to just state your name and your affiliation, where you're from, before you ask the question, similar to the AGM, just so we know who's talking and where it's coming from. As many of you probably already heard, the meeting is being recorded right now. I believe we do need to say that for legal purposes. The whole point of that is that we are limited in our WebEx capacity, so we want to make sure that this is available to people who couldn't make it tonight, as well as to anybody who wasn't able to get on the call. So just know that we are recording. Fourth, I can't say it enough, guys. This is a moving target that we're talking about. The fluidity of the situation is beyond compare. I can tell you answers as I have them right now. Take it all with a grain of salt. The answer may not be the same after this meeting, it may not be the same tomorrow or next week. As you've seen coming out of FYSA, as you've seen coming out of the highest forms of government, nobody has a lot of firm answers. I wish I could end this conference with, hey, this is the firm date that we are going to be back on the field, no questions asked, but that is certainly not the question. So take what you hear tonight with a small grain of salt, and know that we're all dealing with the same challenges, even beyond the soccer community in our day-to-day lives. So just know that as we talk. I'll talk, as we go throughout, about the decision-making that goes into some of the things that you've seen come out of FYSA. But just in general, know that FYSA is making decisions based on the guidance of those organizations who are above us, like I'm sure many of you guys are doing on the phone as we make decisions. You deal with the fallout of it. We're listening to feedback from U.S. Youth Soccer, the U.S. Soccer Federation, obviously local and national governments. When the governor came through and closed down, they basically gave a shelter in place for the entire state, that changed everything for us as well. All of our projections are really just based on the advice that we're getting from above, and then getting feedback from you guys as far as what would work best. A big thing that we're talking a lot about at the board level and at the staff level truly is what's going on at the schools, because we do see a lot of parallels in what we do, not only with athletics, but also working with youth. So know that those are the places where we're getting our information and basing our decisions off of. Finally, I'd say that we're here for membership feedback. We certainly want to hear from you guys. I'm not sure how 122 people now are going to go as far as giving us feedback and being able to ask questions in an orderly fashion, but that's the purpose of this slideshow. Hopefully, I can front some of your questions right off the bat, rather than getting the same question from six different people trying to talk at once. I will say that I am not one to be afraid to say, "I don't know," and let me get back to you. We continue to evaluate this situation. That may be the answer to some of your questions, and I hope that you can respect that, going back to the fourth point, and as we get some feedback from you guys. So moving into some specifics that we've got here, just a little recap of where we currently stand, the timeline. March 12th was when FYSA suspended all of our state-level play and competitions. We put a hold to ODP training. A lot of people don't recognize that this hits coaching education as well. All programs that FYSA puts on cups, Commissioner's Cup to President's Cup, were suspended on March 12th. That came along with a recommendation that our affiliates suspend. You'll hear that throughout this presentation, and if you've been following some of the guidance that's been coming from U.S. Youth Soccer and U.S. Soccer Federation, that difference between a mandatory suspension of play and a recommended suspension of play have been are two totally different things. And at that time, we came out with a recommended suspension of play for all affiliates through April 12th. Just a few days later, six days later, we came out with a mandatory suspension of all play. This time, we fell in line with U.S. Youth Soccer's recommendation to go through April 15th, just a few more days, but the important factor there is that now, no affiliates, no sanctioned tournaments, nobody can play U.S. Youth Soccer competitions in the entire state of Florida, starting on March 18th. March 20th, we just provided some guidance to our clubs mostly about updates from U.S. Youth Soccer. At that time, they were intending to play all their competitions, regionals and nationals, as scheduled. We thought that was important to communicate out to everybody. And then we also gave the first indication of what we were going to do with our competitions was the intention to continue the play. Finally, most recently, the most recent update you received was on April 1st, just last week. We extended the suspension of play, which now goes through May 3rd. There can be no U.S. Youth Soccer competition in the state of Florida through May 3rd is where we currently sit, with a new start date of May 4th. We also communicated to everybody the unfortunate news that regional and national competitions through U.S. Youth Soccer have been canceled. That was Regional President's Cup, National Championship Series, both regional and national competitions. Below this, and I'll run through this really quick, is just the decision-making that we've been getting from U.S. Youth Soccer. It all started with their cancellation of the Las Vegas Showcase on March 10th. They've issued travel advisories prior to that. Then they issued a recommended suspension of play till April 15th. They canceled ODP East and South Championships on the 23rd. And then finally, on the 31st, is when they put out their regional and national competitions were canceled, along with a return-to-play recommendation of May 1st. You'll notice that our deadline is a little bit more stringent, and that goes into U.S. Youth Soccer's challenges. Every state isn't locked down right now. Every state doesn't have the same number of confirmed cases. So they, like us, are dealing with a lot of unique challenges. There's a state-to-state, ours is county-to-county, city-to-city, or geez, even park-to-park, I've been hearing. So I bring this up, particularly the FYSA part, to really credit our Board of Directors. You can see how many times they've met in the last month with the frequency that they've met as well. This first meeting that we had was on March 12th at 2:00 PM. These are a lot of professionals, people who have other jobs, and I'd like to credit the board, I'm sure many of them are on the call with us right now, that they have been very nimble in their decision-making in this. And you'll see that come across throughout, I go through this presentation, that they have been able to make decisions very quickly, and then the staff has been able to communicate that out very quickly. So I thank the board and the staff for how quickly we've been able to go through the various hurdles that we've faced, and I assure you, we'll continue to do that. The next FYSA evaluation that's been communicated to everybody about everything, about competitions, about mandatory suspensions of play, about tryouts, all things I'm going to hit on momentarily is scheduled for April 21st. Note that big asterisk I put there. I would not be surprised if we met before then. That's our next scheduled board meeting. If something necessitates it, if there are changes from the national level, from the governor, from the federal government, we will certainly meet before the 21st. But as previously communicated on March 1st, the next evaluation will be on April 21st. Real quickly, I'd like to talk about the FYSA office. The FYSA office is open, not physically, but we are all available from regular office hours, 8:30 to 5:00 PM. The staff is working remotely. I don't think under any definition you would consider us essential, so we are doing what is safe. Please email us. Everyone I've talked to on this phone, I hope, has my cellphone number. It's in my email address, it's in my email signature. Anyone who wants it can have it. Please feel free to email me. I pride myself on being available to you guys, the membership, when we need it. Feel free to call me, email the rest of the staff. We're working on strategic projects. Soccer isn't going on day-to-day, so we are working on planning for the future, which gets into the next point, a lot of contingency planning's going on. But I have asked the staff to look at big picture, to look at strategic projects that we can plan for the future, because there's not coaching education, because there's not State Cup, at least for right now. We're working on communicating to you guys as much as we can. I hope our communication hasn't been over the top. We hope it's been appropriate. We're always considering that, how much is too much, how much is not enough. So we hope you're receiving our emails. If you're not, please let me know, let Jared know as well. He's our Director of Communications. And we're also surveying the membership. I'll touch on that in a little bit. I know several of our board members have been at the regional level, very instrumental in reaching out, but I would emphasize that communication goes both ways. Please let us know what's going on locally there. Please email me if your fields have been taken away for the rest of the summer. Email me if anything that you might think would be relevant to our decision-making, please feel free to send it to me. Like I said, we'll send you the information that we feel is pertinent, but I would hope that you would send us back communication as well. So you'll be seeing more surveys soon. And lastly, I had somebody take us up on this last point just today. Utilize our office staff in your planning. I feel that we're going through a lot of the same challenges right now from different levels. We're feeling the same type of angst from the national level that you guys are probably feeling from the regional level, from an in-state component. Bounce ideas off us, guys. We have, are all fighting this together. And again, as I started this with, if we don't know the answers, we'll do our best to figure it out for you, or come back with, it's a wait-and-see. So use our office, because I think we are going through a lot of the same types of plannings with tournaments and leagues. We're fighting the same fight here, guys. Player registration fees. Thought I would get to this very early in it, because I'm sure a lot of you have questions on this to get it out of the way. Whenever I've been getting communications about player registration fees, sorry, I'd like to just take a quick aside. Not only will the PowerPoint or the recording of this be posted in the coming days, the deck, the slides will be as well, so there's no reason to write feverishly right now. Whenever I hear from people asking about registration fees, I'm always reminding them that player insurance, your registration for FYSA is valid until August 1st. We're getting a lot of people asking questions about cancellations. We still have a lot of time in that realm. I know heat is a factor. I know traditionally, there are a lull in the middle of it, but just know that our player insurance is valid until August 1st. We're keeping that in the back of our minds when we're making our decisions as well. So the insurance, the season technically runs through August 1st. I need to mention this before we get into the membership impact. I need to talk about the fees that FYSA pays. Again, I talk about parallels between what you guys are going through as a club and what we're going through as a state. It's very similar in this. We have registration fees that we have to pay out of your player registration fees to the national body. And you can see right here, we put it out there. We pay $2.25 per player, whether it's rec or competitive, to U.S. Youth Soccer, and then another dollar to the United States Soccer. So we have fees that we have not been refunded, or we have paid with no promise of being refunded just yet. Those conversations are ongoing. I'm not very optimistic about getting any of those fees returned. And then, of course, the next biggest part of your player fee is the insurance that we provide. The participant accident policy, the general liability, the access liability, and to a small extent, a DNO policy. Our premiums, our monthly premiums, are based on us having 100,000 player registrations, which is about where we sit every other year. We certainly have not collected 100,000 player registrations from the month of March. Well, to date. There would be more stragglers that come through as we go through and find people who haven't registered. We get them through. I don't have our nearest amount, but it's certainly not even at 90,000 just yet. We're not getting a prorated or adjusted amount for our insurance premiums either. That information was calculated at the beginning of the year. There, again, have been conversations on that part, but we have received no adjusted payments yet. You can see right here, in the interest of transparency, we get charged $6.85, that's about the all-in cost to our members that we get for participant accident, general liability, and access coverage. If you add those up, we're losing money on every single rec player right now. That's just the facts. Here, I'd like to talk a little bit about the policy as well. The minute your kid steps on the field, your participants, your players, our insurance is kicked in. If that was one practice, if that was one game, and the participant accident is actually quite a small portion of it, the general liability makes up a much larger portion of that $6.85. That policy is much more expensive, and that covers the bigger things, along with the access. So it's not just about player injuries, it's about liability more than anything. So just know that as soon as your players' feet hit the field, our policy is in place. So if your kids played this year, we extended our insurance, whether you guys needed it or not. That doesn't include the FYSA Bucks program for the rec organizations out there, of which we have paid out $87,000, which we're happy to pay out. I personally love, love the Bucks program, but just adding to the total that we have incurred in costs for the state of soccer up until this point. We're expecting no more player registrations this year, as I flipped this from the FYSA side to the membership. We're not expecting anyone to register any players. Please don't activate them in the system unless, of course, we do return to play at some point before August 1st. We're going to continue to evaluate that, but we're not expecting anybody to be building rosters, unless, of course, they were on the fields. The players that played in one game or one practice really do need to be on a roster and registered in GOT Soccer, because our insurance was extended to them. And if there's a claim and they weren't registered, we're, of course, we're not able to cover it. So what goes along with this is that the recommendation suspension of play is March 12th. They should have got in a fair amount of March play, hopefully. I know many of your rec leagues have not, or just practiced until this point. Where I'm going with this is the March registration billing. March registration billing has been completed in GOT Soccer. We haven't billed your individual accounts yet for this. As you can see at the bottom, it's going to be delayed until April 13th. We're getting a lot of questions about financial hardships. That's why I started with the FYSA side of this, to let you know that, again, we are dealing with a lot of the same issues. If you have a specific financial hardship, we are dealing with it case by case. You will need to contact me before April 13th, before next Monday. You will need to contact me. I'll be working with our treasurer, along with the finance committee, to look at these case by case. I don't want to discourage people from contacting me. We want to help the members as much as we can. But if your teams were out there participating, the bottom line is that our insurance was extended. We're going to need backup documentation as well. This last point here about supporting documentation was just added recently, as I've talked with other states in the region about how they're handling this as well. So we'll just need to see suspension notices from your fields, that can't be used. Just anything that you would think that would be helpful in us making a decision. So just know that's where we're at right now with membership fees, so I can't tell you flat out that, yes, we're refunding this, no, we're not refunding that. We're looking at it a case-by-case basis, and I hope that you guys look internally to where you're at, looking at that top portion of what we talked about from FYSA, and a little bit of background on the costs that we incur. And the one last thing that I've got, the commitment from both the board and specifically our treasurer, if something on this were to change, if we get prorated premiums, if we get dollars back from FYSA and USYS, that will come back to our member leagues. We would consider ourselves a pass-through in that, and if we, the savings will be passed along to our members. So keep that in mind. Moving on to the other thing that I think everyone's going to want to talk about, again, I'll get it out of the way quick and hopefully get through the next several slides, our FYSA competitions. As I mentioned earlier, USYS has canceled all regional and national competitions. That's National Championship Series, AKA State Cup and President's Cup. As recently as April 1st, the FYSA Board of Directors had a discussion on this matter. Our intention is to complete FYSA cups. That includes the ones that you see there, Commissioner's, State Cup, President's Cup, and Futures. I would reiterate that word, intention. We have a lot of planning going on in the background. Big credit to our Competitions Department, both Jill and Jonathan, who have, I think, put it in a scenario for almost every different return-to-play date, every return-to-play format, everything that we could potentially do, we are talking about with our Competitions people. That's where I talk about the scope and the format about this. We're not sure. We may have to go to single elimination on these. We have heard from a lot of the players, a lot of the coaches, the parents on this, that there is going to be this desire to get out there and play. We want to meet that desire, and we want kids to get out there. We want their, in some cases, last experience in club soccer for those seniors to be positive. We don't want them to have worked for something for years and not have that opportunity at the end. With all of this being said here, again, we are continuing to evaluate, we're continuing to get information, we're continuing to have a board discussion on it. This may be a different answer from next week, but again, as we sit right here on April 8th, this is our plan coming from the Board of Directors. The big thing I'd also like to highlight on here, some of you probably saw it, but third point from the bottom, there is a survey that has gone out just this afternoon. Jonathan sent that out today, and I thank him very much for it. You're going to be seeing a lot more surveys coming out of us. We've got one that's going to the coaches, we've got one that's going to the managers, and we've also got one going to the club administrative itself. So we are trying to get that feedback from everybody about what they want to see done with the cups. And this is the first step. This is a very high level. Would you want to support this? We've kicked around an idea of a celebration of soccer as well. That wouldn't be necessarily the ultra-competitive cups environment, but just a goodwill of the game, but we're kicking that idea around more. Again, the intention, as it sits right now, is to complete the cups. It very well may change. Tryouts. Probably overwhelmingly, what I've heard maybe the second most about is tryouts. I would, I've quoted the FYSA Rule 401.6 directly here, and I draw your attention specifically to the bolded portion. Originally scheduled, originally scheduled. That ties our hands a little bit. The originally scheduled round of 16 for State Cup was the weekend preceding May 18th. May 18th is a Monday. As we discussed last week with the Board of Directors, we are going to keep this date as is for now. That very well, again, could change if there are longer mandates, but we felt that this rule, for whenever it was put in place, was in place for a reason. So originally scheduled is what we are going to go with, has been my answer across the board as we talk to all of our membership. Membership resources. This is something that I'm very proud of the staff for putting together. We have gone to great lengths to try to not only communicate with you guys, but to also leave, put resources in your hands as well. U.S. Youth Soccer, more so than us, has partnered with this company called Cinebody. Really interesting. It's a kids' shared video resource. It's really been popular on a national level. We push it out on our social media networks as well. We've seen quite a bit of response to it. Please feel free to embrace it. I believe it is free right now. More soccer-specific and more specific here in Florida, we have partnered, I guess would be a good term, with TopTechers, which is an app specific for players and coaches to use at home. What we liked about this is that it's very customizable. Coaches can give specific trainings to players, or they can use preloaded ones that are in there, if they don't want to create their own content. It does come at a fee that we've negotiated a $5 discount with off of the membership, so please contact our coaching department. Mark Godwin has really headed that up and has done a great job. You've probably seen some of that come out this week, but really, that's the one that's getting our stamp of approval more than anything. Our partners at USC, United Soccer Coaches, has two different apps that are out there. One that is the Best 10 Challenge, and another that's called Soccer at Home. Those are already done for you guys. Feel free to embrace them. Bend the Curve is a national campaign from U.S. Soccer has put out there, really a feel-good thing for social media. I think I've seen that almost everywhere, almost every state association. Great campaign, just publicizing all the information that we should all know already. U.S. Youth Soccer as well has materials out there about their national partners. Nike has some good training stuff out there. Chipotle has some deals that are out there. MLS is putting out historic matches, positive coaching alliance, and a lot more. I'll say all of this is available, as you can see on the last point, on our website. Please feel free, we blasted a lot of it out last week, Friday. It should be in your inboxes. Contact Jared about this, or if it's coaching-specific, please contact Mark Godwin. There's a lot of resources for you out there. Probably the biggest member resource that I could probably talk about is what we're all struggling with on the financial side. I will give a caveat on this and go very quickly over it. I'm not a CPA, I am not a financial expert. I can give you my experience of going, working with the SBA, and trying to access some funds out of one of the two that are available out of the disaster loan program. That's where I go back to utilize the staff, if any of you guys would like help on it. I can give you my firsthand account of going through it, probably certainly not a CPA opinion, but that being said, there's two different loans that are out there right now. The Paycheck Protection Program, a little bit more commonly being used, can allow you to get two and a half months' salary, plus a little bit more for utilities and operating expenses. And if you don't lay off any employees for eight weeks, at least the salary is, you won't need to repay it. That is going to be totally forgiven. There, there's a lot that has gone into that. I will say that it opened up last Friday and then the government has changed everything about the program. There's a lot more documentation that's being requested, but it, but it does go bank to bank. As I would tell all of you to, to work with your financial institution on this, because that's where the funding is truly going to come from, your financial institution. You don't work with the SBA directly. But clubs, organizations who are facing a financial hardship, I would really encourage you to go after some of this 376 billion that is available to you out there. You're able to try to get up to $2 million in loans. Again, not all of that could, could or will be forgiven. But again, as we, as we read it, as it currently stands, a, a good, a good chunk of it can be. And even the rest of it comes, that I believe, a 1% interest rate with a 30-year repayment. So if you're struggling at all financially, please look into this. Please use me as a resource. The, the second one is the EDIL loan, Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which has about $10,000 that, that can be forgiven. With a maximum loan amount up to 2 million and a 3.75% interest rate. I'm sure there's other people on this phone call who could even provide more knowledge to it than I could. But I, but I would tell you that I do have some good firsthand knowledge of going through the process. So know that that's available for you and again, information available on our website. A few miscellaneous things. There is a specific Director of Coaching informational communication that is going out. It, it may be in DOC's inboxes as we speak. Mike Strickler, our Director of Coaching, has put a lot of time into this. I, I felt that this evening is more focused for admins and board members and kind of the, the higher view. Mike will be sending some very specific coaching information to the DOCs. Again, just either today or first thing tomorrow. Reporting of cases, I've, I've got, added this recently as we, we've heard questions about what should we as a club do if we get cases reported to us? A player, a parent reports it. We temporarily had F Y S A a mandate to, to the organizations that they report to us of any cases that are confirmed from their local area. We ran into some HIPAA, potential HIPAA violations. It's up in the air. We, we've walked that back a little bit. If you would like to report to F, F Y S A, cases from your club, please feel free to do so. What it will help us with is our decision-making going forward for different regions, for different clubs. It'll help our decision-making as we move forward with things like competitions and things like return to play dates. So feel free to report that to us, but much beyond that, we, we don't have a lot of guidance because of the, the HIPAA violation, the potential HIPAA violations out there. Received some questions about the Annual General Meeting. F Y S A Annual General Meeting is, we, we are proceeding as if it will occur as currently scheduled. That is a long ways away still. It's still in August, but we are doing, we are doing some contingency planning for that. We're, we're looking at the, the ability for online things like, like we're in right now, which would require digital voting. It makes things hard with credentials, just to give you, again, the idea of the contingency plans that we're putting out there. Regional AGMs, those are even more difficult, generally occur in June. So there, there's a good chance that those are going to have to be moved to July. We've also had the conversation on a board level about moving those to the actual F Y S A AGM prior to our general session. So be on the lookout for that. I, I would encourage everyone to communicate with their regional vice presidents on what they think the best route would be for regional AGMs. I've heard from a few people that it's hard to even try to find space right now, given the climate that we're in. So regional, regional AGMs might have a much higher potential to be moved than the, the Annual General Meeting. And fortunately, we have a lot of flexibility. We have some time on that. There, there is a new document that came out just recently about financial options for clubs. And then that's been recommended from U S Youth Soccer. You should see that posted to our website today or tomorrow. We're just reading it to make sure there's some really good tips in there that, that talk about what decision-making for a club, for a state association. Just, just some more information that's out there. It's, it's nothing that you haven't heard me talk about today. It's, it's don't cancel things too, too early that, that you might need to walk back a cancellation. Continue to evaluate. There, there's a really brilliant idea, I, I thought, I thought, wasn't my thought, but was in there about donations. Money that you might be sitting on as a club. This is not anything F Y S A is doing, but to ask for that to be kept as a donation if you're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. But some really creative ideas, I thought were in there and you'll see that coming out soon. Again, we just received it. We haven't really reviewed it yet, but you should see that post in the next day. Risk management, a lot of questions on that. Risk management is really difficult. We can't really offer refunds for risk management because of our fixed costs. As soon as somebody clicks yes on the background check or clicks submit, our, we're hit with the fee from our processing. So as it sits right now, the risk management is valid through August 30th, as it normally would be. And new applications can begin on June 1st. I, I will say that there have been some other conversations on the board level, but again, as we sit right now today. That, that is our stance on it, that we're, we're going to stick with the same old. And again, risk management's difficult because of the incredibly high cost of doing a background check here in Florida. It's prohibitive in a lot of cases. Finally, I promised this the last slide. I, I chatted longer than I, than I care to. As you can see, I'm totally immersed in this. We, we're going to do future town hall meetings on not just this issue, but other ones. We are up to 133 people on this today. I, I hope that there's been some really valuable information. There's also been talk of regional town halls. I've committed to the regional vice president that if they want to use this exact same service, if they want me to be on the call, I will absolutely do it. I would extend that to, to any of the leagues on here, any of the club meetings as well. If you want my perspective to talk to your members, please feel free to email me, call me, text me, whatever it might take. This will be the first of, of several town halls probably on this topic. We, we don't want to hit you guys next week with the exact same information. So while I don't have an exact date for the next full F Y S A membership one, you, you can be assured that when there's a big announcement that comes, when, when there's a change in what guidance we've given you here today. That we will run another town hall. I think this is a very effective way of getting information to our membership. So that being said, I, I thank everybody for being on here. Jared, if you want to unmute everybody, I will do my best to field a lot of the questions on, on what you've heard today. That'll unmute a lot of board members as well. If, I, I actually, I throw it out to John Stacy first and foremost. If everybody could give just a second, our president, I'm sure he's on. If you'd like to say just anything that I misspoke on or anything that I left out.
For that, for that, we're thankful, but.
John, can you hear us?
Yes. Hey Joel, how are you doing?
I, I'm doing great now that I've talked for 44 minutes.
Well, regrettably, work kept me off the phone until about 5:30, so I just was able to join the last couple of slides. I'm sure you covered a lot of, a lot of information. I know I previewed, previewed your slides earlier. You know, to reiterate, you know, it's certainly our desire to see kids back on the field. This is an extraordinary circumstance that I never in my wildest dreams would have imagined we would be dealing with this type of shutdown, certainly for this long. You know, I am very thankful that we have Joel and the staff who are spending their time wisely to really see the big picture and be prepared for, you know, opportunity for us to get back on the field. They have contingency plans for a number of scenarios, you know, when we want to open up the fields and get restful. So they're doing the heavy lifting right now. We as a board are constantly evaluating individually and communicating amongst ourselves. Well, as Joel, Joel probably mentioned, we won't be getting back yet, no longer than April 21st to evaluate the current state affairs. And getting out any new guidance coming out of that meeting. So I'm here, as Joel said, if you have any questions, we're happy to field them and give you our thoughts.
Hi Joel. Are you there?
Yep.
Hey, this is Barry. I'm the Department of United Soccer Association Director. Which is part of our region fix. And I don't plan to speak out to everyone, but for a lot of things we have to discuss.
I'm sorry, that was breaking up an awful lot there. If you're not speaking at the moment, could you mute your phone? I, I see a name popping up time after time, but that, that was really hard to hear in the background.
So this is Gary Williams from South Florida, U S Soccer Association. By the largest means, here are the few questions I have, which I'm sure my patriots in other leagues have and clubs have. People have registered and paid play in states. There's no real expectation that that's going to take place. We were all optimistic, but we have to be realistic at the same time. So if it goes to single elimination situation ever, there's people who pay a lot of money expecting to have the traditional state cup situation. So first of all, what is F Y S A to do about that? And number two, if it doesn't happen at all, what we've always talked about in F Y S A is that we don't play in the state. And the extent to which this is not a resolution that's going to help those clubs that support F Y S A. Unfortunate, it's not your fault, but it's, it's a fact we have to address. So what do you expect to do when we can't get together to practice? We can't get together and play and we can't put together a state cup competition? Or other competitions? What do you expect to take place and what do you expect to do about installing the money as a payment?
I, I would, I, I'll take, I guess, the, the first crack at it. Yes, I, I, I think that perhaps our plan right now is, is very optimistic. And I, I personally, and I, I hope I'm not speaking on behalf of every, everybody, I, I like being optimistic about this. We are going to have an opportunity to get back on the field. As I mentioned during the board portion of it, our, our board is committed to, to evaluating these situations and making decisions very quickly. Being very nimble in, in the decision-making, having a lot of, having a lot of different conference calls and fostering in a lot of dialogue. I, I, I will commit to everybody on this phone. If there's not a, a state cup, we're, we're going to be forced to, we're, we're going to need to refund the, the money for state cup entries. That, that's me talking. I, I, we would certainly need to go to the entire board. I don't see any reason why not. If it goes to single elimination, we've had the conversation already. Generally, everybody is guaranteed three matches. If you're single elimination, you played one match, we're refunding two, two-thirds of your registration fee. If you played two games and then get eliminated, you're getting a third of it back. That, that's generally the way I've seen it. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry. To enter state cup, what is the registration fee to pay to F Y S A?
The registration fee is $900 per team.
So you're saying that they're basically playing at this point, $300 per game? In order to, if they, if they lose their first round game, they get $600 back? If they lose their second round game, they get $300 back?
I'm not going to commit to that being in stone. I certainly wouldn't. What I'm, what I'm saying is that's no different than any other state cup opportunity. If you played three games and lost all of them, you, you would have paid $300 per match and not proceeded out of group play.
But again, you know, those people who have an opportunity to, would go forward and state cup, given an opportunity to say, instead of paying $300 per game, we would rather just back out of it and get our $900 back? Are you saying it's $300 per game that you do play for the first three games?
And with all respect, I'd, I'd like to not work into the what ifs. We, we've talked about both scenarios. We, we've talked about refunding fully everybody's funds who has played if they want to. We've even talked about that other idea of a celebration type of event in it. We, we don't have anything in stone right now. Once we get that firm date that we're going to be allowed to return to play is when we can do all of this. We, we've had conversations about every scenario that's out there and that, that I can assure you, it's just very difficult to, to tell you with any certainty. What I would rather hear is I'd turn this back around to you. What, what would you rather see? What would the people on this phone rather see? And then please also turn around and answer that way in these surveys that are coming out, that are going to clubs and to, to coaches and admins.
Joel, John, everyone else, I absolutely 10,000% agree with you. This is a dreadful, horrible situation. But when clubs come to us and teams come to us and say, what should we plan to do about the money being paid and this and that? I would say, I would suggest F Y S A, okay, you asked to be in state cup. It was a different concept than it is now for obvious reasons that none of us have control over and it's no one else's fault. So I would say, okay, you paid $900 when you were guaranteed probably three games. You can drop out now and leave those that wish to continue to play. And the biggest problem with that from your side is that you can't tell them if they're going to play or when they're going to play. And that's not your fault, it's no one else's fault. I'm just saying, I would say to them, you want your $900 back? Take it. Understand going forward, it's going to be a single elimination and it's more or less $300 per game for the first round to go through. And, and that, and that, and that gives them the option to say, you may, you may have a, a U-15 division with 40 teams. And then now, when they have no idea if they're going to play again or when they're getting together again, or if they actually be the same team together again, they can say, okay. I think it's time for us, we've been shut down for a month or two. We're going to be shut down for at least another month on our best day. So we want our money back, we get our money back. And by the way, it may not come back to the people who paid it. It may come back to the clubs and that's the most, that's a different discussion altogether and that's not your problem to have.
Yeah, we, we've certainly had that conversation and that, and that's why we're trying to get as much perspective from a, as big of a variety of members as possible. We want to know what the players have to say about this, what they want to do. We want to know what the clubs have to say. We want to know what the coaches have to say about it. So I, I certainly appreciate the feedback. I, I know we've got a lot of board members on this phone call who just heard you. It's, we, we've heard that and then we, we've heard feedback from, from people who want, want to keep it going. Until we have that firm date, you know, one of our contingency plans truly is that we, we could start up mid-May. Now, now I think that that again is optimistic and if, if we have to, I, I talked about single elimination as an option. I don't want everybody to think it's the only option. If we can truly get the cups started back up, and, and this goes down a, a rabbit hole, because there, there's so many things that come with the cups. We, we've talked about self-scheduling. We've talked about neutral sites. We, we've talked about everything that you can imagine. We, we've, we've put into just this, this idea bin that we have of what we could do. I, I don't want to get wrapped up in single elimination. I just mentioned it as one of the options that we've had to explore. And frankly, that option doesn't come into play until we're, you know, June 1st time. So there, there may be a time, time in there to run it in method, in ways that we previously had. I, I guess what, what I would say in general is we're not jumping to make a decision on the competitions.
Joel, let me say this. Joel, let me say this. You walked through a situation that no one could anticipate. And from all accounts, what I've heard, you've done an exceptional job in trying to manage an unmanageable situation. Because we all have questions, and it's not your fault, none of us can answer, nobody can answer. So the question is, we just need a little direction as to the options the clubs will have and the teams will have as to how they want to go forward. I have utmost respect for what F Y S A is trying to do. No one asked for this, no one preserved it, but we're happy with it. And we're looking for, we can inform those teams and clubs out there how to make, make it work best for them. Because each of them has to do different things. Like for example, the same club that a U 14 team that's, that be in it, a U 16 team says, oh, I'll go, let's go for it. And you guys, you guys have provided the best format that it could possibly be. And it's not, it was not, it was created, it was, here is where we are, what are we going to do? How do we best advise the clubs and teams that what's their options? That matters to me. And if you guys are in great shape and it's horrible and you deserve it, we're definitely, that's what I'm talking about.
Great, no, 100% received. Received the message and I'm sure everyone else on the board did. Not, not a, not, not surprising. I mean, we're, we're thinking about all of these things, we're trying to think about every one of our members in our decision making. It's, it's not a, a great position that, that we're in right now. And I, I certainly appreciate the sentiment here. I, I'd like to, for the respect of everybody else, just is there anything on, on different topics? I, what was, I, I can talk all day about this stuff, but I just want to continue to open it up.
I have a question on, from a legal standpoint. You have the Nash, you have the, you have F Y S A who's canceled regional and national competitions. And then if, you know, you go ahead with state cup or a celebration thing and God forbid, there's an outbreak. You've gone against the national organization and it opens up, I think, to some lawsuits. Considering, you know, you're not, they've canceled regionals, nationals. I mean, have they put any thought into that? Like the rush to get back to play? I mean, and look, by this time, kids are, a lot of them have probably already, you know, kind of, you know, dialed it out, the older ones. There's the thoughts of tryouts and switching teams. Like if it gets late and I think you're going to have a hard time finding teams to, you know, that are paid for a state cup to get a celebration cup anyways. So what would be the point in opening yourself up to that risk?
Well, a big, the, the U S youth soccer communication on canceling cups i- is posted to the website. And I would encourage everybody to take a look at that. One of the big reasons that they specifically did cancel the regional and national events were, were to give us the flexibility throughout the summer to continue to run our events. We had a very firm stop date because of when the regional events were scheduled. And coming from the perspective of, of having run a regional event last year in Kansas City and also a national event last year in Kansas City. It, it's not as simple as bumping it a month, bumping it two months even. There, there are just way too many logistics. So I think that they didn't have a lot of flexibility in, in when they could play it, it was those days or really not at all. And then they wanted to open it up to us to be able to run these types of events from, from a state perspective. Now legally speaking, going to, to what you're talking about, it's a concern. It, it truly is. Running those events are going to get a large gathering of people. Me personally talking, I think that, that we, we're all going to experience a gradual come, come back to normalcy. I think we'll, we'll be in the office a, a little bit more, there'll be small gatherings. But let's face it, you know, looking at the CDC recommendations, you're not going to have almost any game and let alone a state cup game where there are less than 50 people gathering. I, I mean, jeez, there, there could be 44 players alone and then you had coaches and referees and, and you're at it. We, believe it or not, we've even talked about running the events without spectators, which isn't something we're really, I mean, these are the conversations we're having. So yeah, absolutely legally, that, that is weighing on our mind. We, we'll, we'll continue to factor those things in and I, I make decisions that align with other states, other municipalities. The, the big thing that we didn't really talk about today is when these fields all come back. I'm sure all of you are dealing with fields that have different dates. I've seen some that are already canceled through June 1st. One point on one of my previous slides when talking about competitions is the idea of injury and the idea of we don't want to rush these kids back. We're, we're committed to not starting any potential competition on the day that we come back. We understand that these kids are going to need some conditioning when they hit the fields and then we go to local fields. So yes, the, the thought process is there. I, I will assure everybody with the way that I started this forum is that safety of the players is always our, our number one concern. So that, that, that we, we will be considering that greatly and taking cues from everybody else. I had a, a conference call this afternoon with the other state associations in the region. And we're all sort of in the same boat, like we all are on this phone call. They're, they're, they're making decisions and will, not, not that we're necessarily following them, but it's a good barometer of, of where other states are at within the southern region.
I would tell you that I respect at some point in time, sooner or later, the fields will be in better shape and more accessible to you to do things in a shorter timeframe.
Absolutely, yep. We have been contacted by several facilities throughout the, the state that are looking for people to use their fields. So that, that, that also lends to our optimism on the state events. That, that we really have an opportunity to make something special out of this and make, use multiple facilities and use beautiful facilities that sometimes we wouldn't.
Feel free to call upon the people on this call who obviously care about youth soccer to be able to provide those for you.
Absolutely. Well, guys, I, I would love to this to end at one hour on the dot. If there's anything else, I'm more than happy, or if you guys would like to contact me individually. Go ahead.
Joel, could you talk a little bit more about tryouts? And I mean, because it's, I, I understand the way it's worded. I also understand that you've got U S clubs that we've got to deal with. And if we have the, the cups that we're dealing with as well. I mean, tryouts want to be a good experience for everybody. And I know that all clubs want to do it the first day possible. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the, the board, I think in particular, didn't want to violate a particular, such a strongly written bylaw. I, I think that there may come a time anyways where we're forced to by some agency above us. I, I think that that will be top on the list of things that will be reevaluated on April 21st at our next meeting, if not before. If, if we hear a swell of people who, who want it addressed. I, I heard today from three different states in the southern region who have moved theirs. All others are kind of holding firm in a, in a wait and see type of pattern. Yeah, yeah, running cups after it is a interesting perspective. I mean, we, we're always running everything beyond round of 16 after the cups. And of course, regionals and nationals go on after the cups. And, and our hope is, if I'm being honest, that, that we don't see a lot of player movement this year. State cup could even be a carrot to keep your teams together that, hey, we still have this work to work for. We have unfinished business. With all of that being said, we may have our hand forced in, in that it has to move. Tryouts certainly have more people at it for most larger clubs. Guys on the board, John, Eric, Dara, I, I don't want to leave you guys out of it. Am I speaking properly for what the, the, the thought process was last Thursday when we, or last Wednesday when we met last?
Yeah, this is Kai. From a, I think, I think at the end of the day, a lot has to do with one individual, clubs will get their fields back. Which I, I don't know if that's going to be across the board for everybody. And so I mean, I think that was one of the big concerns out of my region, the area that I represent was, okay, it's great that there is a firm date and we're maybe holding firm, maybe we get to have tryouts May 18th. But what if certain clubs don't have their fields back by May 18th? And that causes, you know, it's not a level playing field. So I mean, that, that was concerned I'm, I'm getting from areas in, in my region. So obviously, like you said before, there's a lot of unknowns to, to address when it comes to, to tryouts or anything else.
Yeah, really a lot of what, what we're hearing is that inconsistency in municipalities, in cities, in, in parks of when things are going to be available. Some clubs are fortunate enough to own their own fields even. It's, and, and we do want to make that playing field as level as possible. Again, like so many of my answers, I, I apologize that it is, we are thinking about it, we are evaluating it day to day, hour to hour.
So Joel, on that, this is John, just to reiterate that, yes, there's nothing set in stone at this point. I, I will encourage anyone on this call, if you have thoughts around, you know, what, how we should react, what we, you know, decisions we should be making, then I would encourage you to feed that information through your regional commissioners and through your regional vice presidents. You're certainly welcome to send me an email or, or frankly, anyone, an email that you choose. We, we want to hear from you, we'd love, love to have the perspective from everyone. What Kai, you know, was kind, you know, kind of alluding to there was, you know, the fact that we, we don't control the fields. And so we could just say, say, hey, let's go back to soccer next week, but the, the local municipalities, the local fields wouldn't be available. So, so that is a consideration that we have to, to look at. On our last call, we talked about the, the board, you know, surveying the clubs and, and the fields and really giving us a better picture of what would be available on any given date. If everybody shut their fields down until May 31st, then we would clearly have a different problem than, than what we're faced with today. So again, I would encourage you to, to give us some feedback in writing. Let us be able to, to evaluate that and then make an informed decision on April 21st.
Joel, this is Mike Hyatt from GCF. Got a bunch of large complexes through our team in the league. And one thing that we've thought about doing is once we get back to being able to practice and that kind of stuff is kind of make it, see if we can make it available to clubs that maybe don't have open fields, to let them know where there are open fields for them to go practice. So on a league level, we're, we're kind of keeping that dialogue open.
Yeah, yeah, no, and we're, work with us and our staff on it as well. We'd, that, that sounds like a great benefit that you can provide and maybe we can even piggyback on it with some that are, you know, outside your general league parameters. I can tell you, speaking to where our facility is, I have Lake Myrtle here in Auburndale. They, they are going to want everybody out there as soon as they can. And I imagine there's going to be a lot of facilities in the, in the same boat. They're losing money like everybody else is in this. All right, guys, well, I added my email address here to this last slide. Feel free, if there's some information you weren't comfortable sharing aloud, please let us know. This will not be the last town hall we have. You may see regional ones that come out for any of the regional VPs who, who would like to run it. But this is my email address. Please send me anything that you would like. Like I said, communication works both ways. We'd love to hear from you and yeah, please, please stay in contact and more than anything, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.